I'd like to hold a order of the November 19th, 2008 meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Oplin, would you do the TV coverage and the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 AM in the South Coast, Thompoke, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. We broadcast a Montecito Planning Commission hearings around Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Gottstanker?
Here.
Commissioner Burrows?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Birig?
Here.
And Commissioner Overall will be absent today.
Thank you. Director Black, the agenda status and projection report?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have a relatively short agenda for your Commission. We have two permit items and a workshop that your Commission had requested at our last meeting in November. We're ready to move forward with all of those items. Your next meeting is not scheduled until February 25th, so you're gonna have a nice, long break.
That is wonderful.
And then we will be meeting the fourth Wednesday of each month subsequent to February 25th.
And it looks like on, for our February meeting, we don't have anything calendared so far.
It's, Mr. Chair, it's pretty early.
Yes, no, I understand, it's a long ways away. But it doesn't look like it's gonna be a heavy load at that point, so that's great. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, first of all, happy holidays. Number two is that the two items that have taken place since your last meeting, of course, the Miramar was approved by the Board on December 9th. And yesterday, the growth management ordinance was approved. So that one, that continues. I also want to say, you know, we're doing an awful lot of work with regard to the T- fire, and I'm not gonna go into all the things, but there's a number of activities that are going to be going on, actually, for quite some time. You have a fire, and that goes away in two or three days, and then the activities that go on after that for cleanup, and then the process for rebuilding and such is going to take quite some period of time. But I think, so far, I think we have done an excellent job. Everything that we've heard from people up there is that they are very pleased with the work we're doing. Now, we hope that continues when they start coming in with their plans for their buildings. But we will be working, if necessary, through the furlough, if we have to, with some of the clients. We have made contact with, I think, all of them except two at this point. Now, we're down to one. And then we've made contact for what's going to have to, what they are looking at doing during the furlough, so that if there are things that they were expecting during the furlough, then we will accommodate those. So, the furlough is on for everybody except those that might have T-fire issues that we have to deal with. And once again, I'll announce that beginning this Friday night at 5:00, we are closed, essentially, until 8:00 on the morning of January 5th. If there are emergencies, we'll take care of those. But other than that, we will be closed. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, I didn't catch the ordinance you referred to?
The growth management ordinance, the Montecito growth management ordinance.
Mr. Baker, there was a news report, I believe it was a news report, regarding the non-buildable nature of some of the lots in the city. Has that presented itself as an issue for any of the?
I understand that there are some issues with regard to, in the city, but as far as we're concerned, there are no properties that we have a problem that are, at this point, that are non-buildable.
I know some of those slight issues are right on the borderline, but they're not affecting the Montecito lots at this point.
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you. Now is the time for public comment. And if there's anybody here that wishes to address us on an item that's not on our standard agenda now, would be the time to do so. I don't have any speaker slips, other than for our two agenda items. If not, I'll close the time for a public comment and take it to the Planner Commissioners' informational reports, and I'll just open it up. I know this is a holiday time. Does anyone have any, any issues they wish to present? Not seeing any?
Hang on.
Oh, Commissioner Gottstanker?
Well, in relationship to the T-fire, I mean, I obviously have been going to a number of meetings, ongoingly, wearing my hat for the Mountain Drive Community Association. And I just would like to follow up with Mr. Baker's comments. I mean, experience of the owners in the Mountain Drive area, Coyote Road area, has been really, their experience, as far as I am hearing with dealing with the county, has been extraordinary. They have found the county extremely helpful in getting through all of what's needed to get through for the long haul. And so, I, you know, I mean, I could go through all the meetings I've been going to and what we've been doing, but, you know, it's just, you know, we get our new, we get our new county trailer on tomorrow at 10:00 AM, which is really going to help the community in having sort of a central place to work from. And once again, I want to just thank Salute Carbahal for everything that he did, and John McGuinness, and Diane in making all of that happen. And just as a report, everybody really is just moving along. I mean, we are encouraging people to sort of slow down till after the first of the year right now, with all the things they have to do. And, you know, I hope they sort of take that to heed, because the private sector is sort of saying, well, you know, we need to slow down, you know, you just need to slow down, you know, we can't get it all done now. So I, as far as I know, you know, people are not expecting to move very quickly through this next couple of weeks. And we've been sort of saying, listen, just step back, hang out with your families, enjoy the holiday, and then after the first of the year, we'll just hit the pavement running. So.
Thank you.
Do you? Yes, I do.
Please.
I was able to attend a very good workshop meeting sponsored by the Homeowner Defense Fund, which now has a new name, and I apologize for not having that name with me, addressing housing issues for all of Southern California. It was well-attended. The Speaker was one of the supervisors from Los Angeles County, and I think we learned a great deal.
Thank you for that. Moving on, it looks like the next item is the Planning Commission divisional briefings. Do we have anything?
Mr. Chair, yes, we do. We're gonna begin monthly briefings on the Westmont project, as is required by the permit conditions. And this first briefing is just gonna be very informal, and we'd like some feedback from the Commission as to how you'd like to have those briefings conducted in the future. So we don't have written materials, it's really just a status report.
Okay.
Where things are at. And Alex is gonna do that for us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. So as you all know, or probably are aware, that Westmont College has began development of their Phase 1 of their master plan. Just a little update as far as where we are with that project. The land use permit was approved beginning of October, after about a year and a half of finalizing all the architectural designs and working through the Montecito BAR, pulling together all their condition requirements for their tree protection plans and their various other restoration activities. They started site preparation towards the end of October, and that primarily consisted of putting up all the construction fencing and the tree protection fencing, installing some of the construction best management practices for soil erosion and drainage issues. Of course, then the T-fire rolled in, and they've had to then reinstall most of the fencing which had been burned or damaged during the fire. So there have been some setbacks associated with the fire, and as you know, the number of structures were lost on the campus. We worked with the college to issue an emergency permit for them to bring in some temporary trailers to replace some of those lost structures while they worked to rebuild. Fortunately, a couple of the structures that were lost had been proposed for removal and demolition as part of this initial phase, so that was somewhat fortuitous. There have been monitors, construction monitors, on-site every day. So far, it's been a minimum of two monitors on-site every day, monitoring the site preparation activities. To this point, most of the activities of, in the last few weeks, have been around tree removal, preparing the site, clearing out the areas. They have started grading for the new perimeter road and the south entrance off of Cold Spring Road, and that apparently is nearing completion. And they have started working towards the middle portion of the road and the upper portion of the road by Page Hall. Approximately 90% or so of the demolition is completed, and that includes not only the structures lost with the T-fire, but also structures, again, proposed for demo as part of this initial phase. They're looking to start pulling building permits, or they've pulled one building permit so far for the observatory. They'll be pulling a building permit, most likely today, for the Central Plant. And they expect construction to begin with those sometime the beginning of the new year, with the idea that the academic buildings, Winter Hall and Adams Center, Art Center, would follow sometime in, end of January, beginning of February, mid-February, for pulling the building permits for those structures. So that's generally where we are. They are moving forward with the project. Right now, with the rains, it's been more or less stalled at this point while the ground dries up, but they plan to continue as, once that weather has passed. And if you have want any more specific question, specific answers, or information on any specific items that are going on on campus, I'd be happy to answer those. And if you do have any feedback on how you'd like this information presented in the future, please let me know.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Did the T-fire change the possibilities for siting or any plan adjustment? They were so constrained coming in, I wonder if this changed any of the opportunities? And would we see any changes?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, the project has not been altered by the T-fire. The locations of all the new buildings are remaining the same. The one thing that has changed, obviously, is some of the screening that is present on campus, as the fire did sweep through and burn a lot of the existing vegetation. Fortunately, your Commission had the foresight to accommodate that in their approval of the master plan and CUP by including a condition that perimeter landscaping and screening be replaced in the event of a natural disaster. So Westmont is working to accomplish that. They're taking their existing landscape plan and looking at what was lost and attempting to try to fill in areas with additional planting so that they can re-accomplish that screening that had existed in the past. And the focus of that, at this point, is on the western side of the campus, west of the library, as much of that was lost.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Is the, Mr. Tuttle, is the assumption that they're gonna start with that screening replacement as an early item in, coming around the first of the year? Do you know?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, my understanding is that as they've been clearing the site and preparing the site for Phase 1 development, they've been boxing a number of trees that they didn't want to just cut down, some of the more mature trees that they felt were worth saving. And their intention, as I understand, is to take those boxed trees and put them over on the west side of campus to provide some fairly immediate screening. Because as we know, planting a new tree will take some years before it provides some significant level of screening. So it's their intention to install those boxed trees in that area as an immediate fix, and then as construction moves through that site and they're able to start doing, actually, the permanent landscaping as well, then they'll start filling that in over time.
Thank you. Any other, excuse me, any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as most of you know, there was litigation surrounding the county's approval of the CUP and master plan for Westmont College. And we are pleased to announce that the Court of Appeal has upheld the county's approval of the project and certification of the EIR.
That's excellent. So the next item on our agenda will be the minutes of our meeting of November 19th. If anyone has any comments on these minutes, otherwise, I would like to hear a motion for their approval. I don't have any comments.
I can move to approve the minutes of November 19th?
All seconded.
Moved and seconded without any further comment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I will have to abstain, I was not here for the last item.
Oh, okay. That's, thank you. There's three of us, so that'll be fine. So, so approved with the abstention of Commissioner Burrows.
Mr. Chair, before we move to the standard agenda, I do have one other item I'd like to present on behalf of the Planning Commission. And that is a resolution for you, Bob.
I thought maybe I could get away with not having that.
No, that's not gonna happen. And I know Jack is-
I thought if I moved fast enough, we'd just be right into the standard agenda here.
I know Commissioner Overall is sad not to be able to be here today. And you'll notice there's a blank space on the resolution, so we'll get that signature filled in when we can. In the matter of commending Bob Birig, a resolution from the Montecito Planning Commission, Resolution 0812. Whereas Bob Birig, during his nearly six-year term on the Commission, participated in countless hearings and demonstrated unparalleled dedication on numerous planning projects, including the Westmont College Master Plan Update, the Four Seasons Biltmore Hotel and Coral Casino Rehabilitation, the Miramar Hotel and Music Academy of the West. It's a lot of big projects. And whereas Bob Birig respected the right of every citizen to participate in the process of governing and encouraged public input as an integral part of the work of the Montecito Planning Commission. And whereas Bob Birig spared hearing support staff from wandering lost in Montecito by agreeing to drive downtown and pick up his multiple volumes of the Miramar Hotel staff report himself. And whereas Bob Birig chaired each meeting with professional courtesy and fairness. Whereas Bob Birig gained an extensive knowledge of the Montecito community through his years of experience planning the work routes for Beautification Day. And whereas Bob Birig mastered the art of selective vision in acknowledging fellow Commissioners' speaking lights. And whereas Bob Birig brought his experience of having served on the Architectural Review Committee to his work on the Montecito Planning Commission. And whereas Bob Birig provided a strong sense of leadership to the Commission. And whereas the translation of the, for Montecito is Little Mountain, and our Bob spent the last six years with his time, energy, and graciousness and flair, keeping this Little Mountain a paradise for all. And whereas Bob Birig's friendly smile and blue eyes will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordered and resolved that the Montecito Planning Commission and on behalf of the staff and citizens of the county express its appreciation and commend Bob for his dedicated service. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice. It's been a real pleasure to serve here. Not in the way that I thought it would be when Supervisor Schwartz appointed me. I thought it would be an intellectual exercise and a service to the community. And what I didn't realize is how much I would get out of doing this job. And over time, the nature of the enjoyment has really changed, because one of the things that I have come to realize is, we're extremely lucky in this county. You know, we often thank staff for the work they do, and they do great work. But we're really all part of a big team, is how I see it. You know, I see us as, up here, as part of the staff, it's a big organization. And we, I think we do a really competent job. We do a really, really good job in this county. From the political side on down to the most entry level of staff, not to say we can't always do better, but it's just, it's really rewarding to be involved with something that you feel is really doing good work. And I think we really do good work here. And it's made it just a pleasure to be here. Every member of staff that I've ever worked with has wanted to do the very best thing. And every member of this Commission has always wanted to do the very best thing they could for this community. There's no ideologies up here, nobody's planning to go on to some higher office. We're just here, just to do the right thing. And it's been such a pleasure, and I'm looking forward to going off, but I know I'll miss it right away. And having a presentation like this just reminds you of there's, I'm really gonna miss the people and the involvement. And so, thank you very much for the privilege to serve, it's been absolutely great. So with that, on to agenda item number one.
Mr. Black, can we say nice things about the Chairman first? Well, I'd like to say that I will, I will miss your guidance very much. You were the phone call I needed to make when I'm in a stream trying to figure out upstream and downstream flows, and what I had forgotten from law school, and you will, you will be missed. We should, I should have added to the resolution that you're also the only Commissioner that recognized that steps to the beach were just steps to the beach, no matter how you dressed it up or didn't dress it up. And that was, that was an interesting position to take, and a good reminder for me. So we will, I will miss you, I know we all will. Good luck.
Thank you.
First of all, Bob, I join you, and I second everything that you said about our service. I am the junior member here, and I learned so much from you, and you were always so fair in your chairing, and you chaired some really big projects. We're a better Commissioner, our Commission, for having had you as Chair. And not speaking on behalf of the Montecito community, but I've heard so many people say, what a really good job you have done for us. And I think that we, as a Commission, and Montecito as a community, is better for the service that you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, agenda item number one.
The filing is the hearing on the request of Ken Minow, agent for the owner, to consider case number 07CDH15, application filed on May 8th, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15301E of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
So, Mr. Chair, I just, while we're telling people goodbye, or extending our goodbyes today, this is Jim Heaton's last hearing before the county and the Montecito Planning Commission. He will be joining the redevelopment agency, so we're not losing him to the county family, but won't be-
We're losing him to the-
... in planning and development. So.
Mr. Heaton? I hope you enjoy the, your new position.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to my continued work with the county. Good morning, this, I prepared a short presentation to recall this project and address the recent changes. The project before you is a coastal development permit for additions to an existing single-family dwelling, is returning today with findings for denial as directed by your Commission after deliberation on June 18th of this year. The proposed project is located on Frontal Point Lane, a private road. It is in the 1E1 Zone, adjacent to the ocean in an urban area of Montecito. The project consists of a coastal development permit for construction of a first-floor addition of approximately 238 square feet, a second-story addition of approximately 1,295 square feet, to an existing residence of 6,272 square feet. The new total gross square footage would be 8,289 square feet. This is 94 gross square feet less than the previous proposal reviewed by your Commission.
Would you give us that, how much less?
94 gross square feet, I believe 106 net. Your Commission deliberated on this project during a public hearing on June 18th, 2008, and found the addition would be too large in its exceedance of maximum floor area ratios, and therefore not in conformance with the neighborhood. Staff was directed to return with findings for denial. Here is the project site plan with the properties in bold, property lines in bold. The single-family residence is located here, the beach cabana here, a spa. The guest house is located here, and a second unit, gardener's cottage, here. The guest house and gardener's cottage unit are legal, non-conforming structures. The proposed project includes, in addition to the main residence, including 238 square feet to the first floor, 1,295 square foot second-story addition. And the project has been revised from the previous proposal reviewed by your Commission. The floor area reduction from the previous is shown here in yellow. You can also see the string line in this graphic. As shown, the first floor extends beyond the string line, however, the second-floor addition would not cross it. The windows on the east side have- The windows on the east side have been revised so that the larger bedroom window has been moved to the front sitting room and replaced with a smaller high window. The new elevation sketch is on top here. Here's a picture of the structure from the south. You can see lines representing story poles that were placed for the BAR site visit. These show approximate location of the second-story addition.
Mr. Ward, could you go back to the previous slide again on the elevation?
If you'll remember, there was a concern brought up by the neighbors with regard to window placement and the lower elevation sketch is the old.
So there's, two of the windows have been?
Well, the.
The one window, that window has been moved up to the parapet.
To the.
Actually, it's been moved over to the other elevation.
It's moved forward to the, to the front sitting room, which is stepped further back from the property line and replaced with a higher, smaller window up here.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The proposed project is consistent.
And if you could go back to the picture. This is, this is from the, this is the north elevation. Is that correct?
This is looking at from the, from the, not quite from the beach, actually from the end of their yard as it slopes down toward the beach.
Thank you. Please proceed.
The proposed project is consistent with coastal plan policies, including policies which require adequate services, the protection of public views, and required protection of cultural and historic resources. During the June 18 meeting, hearing, your commission determined the proposed addition are not compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding community. The revised project is not significantly different from the previous project and therefore not consistent with the coastal plan neighborhood compatibility policy. The applicants have submitted revised plans since the last hearing that include a reduction of square footage by 106 net square feet, resulting in total proposed net floor area of 7,089 square feet. The new proposal will be 2,245 square feet or 46 percent over the maximum recommended floor area. A neighborhood FAR study was prepared by the neighbors, the Clinks, in conjunction with a previous project on their lot. That study was considered by the MBAR and your commission at the previous hearing. Following the commission's last hearing, the Grissinis submitted a new neighborhood study. Both studies used the same neighborhood range for Fernal Point and each excluded their own development. The results are similar and the new study appears to account for recent projects, including those on the Clinks property. Both studies have been made available to the commission. The applicant studies show the average ratio of floor area to lot size is 18 percent compared to their proposed 12 percent. The average percent over the maximum floor area is 34 percent compared to their proposed 46 percent. The project was conceptually reviewed by MBAR prior to your last commission hearing. MBAR directed it to return following the planning commission for preliminary and final. It has not been reviewed by MBAR since the conceptual denial by your commission or recent The project meets ordinance requirements, including lot size setbacks, and the proposed development is lower than the maximum height of 25 feet. During the last hearing, the neighbors to the east raised concerns about development adjacent to the gardener's cottage unit. Here is a picture of the survey dated June 16, 2008, submitted by the applicant to verify the structure's location. You can see the structure crosses over the property line in the north and the east. This is a legal non-conforming structure that, according to historical report, was built around 1929. It's prior to permit requirements. No work is currently proposed to this structure and it does appear to match previous plans. A building permit for remodel was approved in 2003. The project did not involve any structural changes, did not trigger the requirement for a coastal development permit, and did not affect the legal non-conforming status of this structure. The landscaping shed and irrigation raises points of concern. The last hearing were located on neighbors' properties shown in gray. The applicants have said the landscaping and shed were removed since the last hearing. This was not on the subject property and therefore not something that should prevent the commission from making findings. Staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt the required findings and deny the project. And I would like to note, a correction on the findings, they are titled findings for approval. The title should be findings for denial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation? Thank you very much, Mr. Ward. Is the applicant here and wishes to make a presentation on this item?
My name is Mark Appleton. Ken Minow and I are architects for the project. And I'm hoping we can have a couple of documents up on the screen. This first one here, I wanted to go back a little further and show you where we started and where we've come from. The dotted red line was our original proposal to the Montecito BAR and showed a more significant second-floor footprint, including that dotted red area. At that initial presentation, the square footage was not an issue, but the neighbor was quite concerned about the invasion potentially of their privacy by the addition of a second-floor portion that was overlooking their backyard. So, the design response we made was to pull back to the green line that you see there initially, relocating some of the square footage we were proposing upstairs, downstairs. The, and obviously reducing the second-floor program rather significantly. That entire red area was eliminated and pulled back. We were commended by the Montecito Board of Architectural Review as an excellent example of the design review process working to address public's concerns. And we made a point of meeting with the neighbor and responding to their concerns rather specifically. Now, what you're looking at is a proposal that now has been reduced twice. So, the reduction of the hundred or so square feet was preceded by a reduction of a significantly larger amount in the process. Next slide is one that you just looked at, but I want to, I want to point out that we pushed the setback some 10 feet back from the property line from the second floor in addition to relocating the offending window, which was the window that looked more into the neighbor's yard. And we moved it around to the south side in a way that it would be less intrusive and included only a high window that's well above head height in the bedroom, just to let light into the bedroom on that side. We pulled back from the string line as well. But the dotted line here, the red dotted line, I think you can read in this elevation, shows where we had started. So there was a significant reduction in the elimination of this entire wing on this side in response to the neighbor's concerns. Notwithstanding the notion that I think we've tried to respond sensitively to the neighbor's concerns and we hope successfully, there's been a concern that what we're proposing is disproportionate for this neighborhood community. And one of the things that I would like to, to review here is, in looking at the entire Fernal Point community, there is a portion at the end of the Fernal Point Lane that's gated. And the line of the gate is shown as the red line there. The Grissini property is part of that gated section at the end. And if you know Fernal Point, all of the properties to the west of that line are on fairly level terrain. At the red line, the terrain changes and goes uphill rather significantly. And the lot, the two, the line of the two lots just west of the line of the gate line is very heavily planted. There is no way that any of the properties to the west of that line can see any of the properties to the east of that line. And I'm sure that those of you who have been to that site would recognize that. It's very, very well screened between the two. We looked at the gated community because that, we really looked at that more locally. Although we're part of the larger Fernal Point community, we looked at the gated community as, as our immediate neighborhood context. And there's a sheet that hopefully you all have, but it's represented on the bottom of this lot track map here, that indicates that the neighborhood average in the gated community, where the lots are smaller, tend to be smaller, is 67 percent over the square-foot guidelines. What we're currently proposing in the current scheme is 46 percent. And to our view, appears to be well within the neighborhood average if you look at where we are in the context of all the houses east of the gate line. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I know John Park would like to get into this issue in a little more detail. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Appleton, I mean, I think I have this in front of me. And what you're saying is that the percent over the square footage is 46 percent. And is that 46 percent over the entire neighborhood or just 46 percent? Could you just go through that again for me?
No, it's 46, it's 46 percent over the guidelines.
Over Montecito guidelines.
Montecito guidelines, yeah.
Got it.
The neighborhood east of the line of the gate, all of the lots inside the gate that are our immediate neighbors, averages 67 percent over those guidelines. So I'm just simply making the comparison between those two.
Okay. And so you did not do the work that includes the, how much over the, okay, no, you did do that.
Yes.
Thanks. Yeah, no, I'm figuring it out. Sorry, I'm a little tired and slow.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heaton, could you put my PowerPoint on, please? I am John Park. I'm an attorney. I represent the Grissinis. And much of what I was going to cover today has been covered by Mr. Heaton and a staff presentation by Mr. Appleton. So I'll go through some of these slides pretty quickly. Go to the first slide, Mr. Heaton. What I'd like to first mention is what's not at issue today. I looked at the video of the hearing in June 18. I was not there. A lot of that hearing was taken up by discussion of alleged zoning violations at the gardener's cottage. County Council aptly pointed out that really wasn't at issue. Mr. Heaton has just pointed out that really is not at issue. And I'd like to confirm that. It's not at issue. There was a lot of discussion of loose bricks for a patio, plantings, gardener shed. All those things have been removed. So we've done everything we can to address these so-called zoning violations. All that's left is the gardener's cottage. You can see it right there. You can see how clean it is on that end. The gardener's cottage does encroach onto the Clinks parcel. The Clinks predecessors executed an easement, acknowledging that encroachment and giving the Grissinis predecessors the authority to have that house where it is. It's been there since 1929. There was some claim made at the prior hearing that it was at one point in time a legal non-conforming structure, but now it was an illegal non-conforming structure because structural changes had been made. Well, there's no evidence that that's occurred. In fact, you can look at the permit file and the permit file shows a number of building permits for this building. Little things, electrical things here and there. And each time, the inspector went out and inspected it, passed inspection. If it had turned into an illegal non-conforming structure, zoning enforcement would have known about it long before you would have heard about it. So it's a legal non-conforming structure. It's not an issue today. Next slide. Just another view of this gardener's cottage. Let's go on to the next slide, Mr. Heaton, please. This is a PDF excerpt, you know, picture of a letter that Mr. Klink wrote in May 29, 2007. It was copied to this commission. I don't know if you've all seen it in your file. And it was, of course, written to Mr. Grissini. It pointed out that Mr. Klink's concern wasn't really the FAR grounds, wasn't the size, it was privacy. Now, I've sent letters to this commission and it appeared briefly at the continuances where we said we were trying to negotiate a lot-line adjustment in that back area where the gardener's cottage is. That did not come to fruition. It may still. But we did not want to hold Mr. Klink's privacy concerns hostage to those negotiations, so we tried to meet them anyway. Let's go on to the next slide. These are the actual plans with the revisions. They show the single new window that's six and a half feet high on the, on the east side, the Klink side. That's high enough that most of us can't see out the window. It'll let light in, but people can't see out, so it won't affect their privacy. You can also see from this that the property's been pulled back two feet from the south, so it's two feet back from the string line. Let's go on to the next slide. You saw this earlier. I want to clear up one point. There was a discussion of, on the original elevation, that's the lower one, of moving one window. Two windows have been moved. What you can't see is that behind the chimney is another large window on the original elevation. That one's been moved over to the sitting area. The other one has been moved to that six and a half foot high location and it's much smaller, so no one can look out. Oddly, when you look at these two elevations, it looks like the sitting area's been expanded out towards the beach. That's an optical illusion. It's been pulled back two feet from the string line. The reason it looks smaller is that the bedroom, which is the further back area that had the two windows, that's been made smaller. So it's altogether a smaller project and one that's been pulled back from the string line. Can we go to the next, next slide? This again shows how the project's been pulled back from the string line. It shows the gardener's cottage way in the back. I think the most important thing about this is twofold. One, you can see that the sitting room area at the south, the right-hand side of the site plan, doesn't look over the Clinks house at all. They were only concerned about the master bedroom addition, and that's been dealt with. The second point that's very germane here and leads into my other slides is, look how far back this house is from the beach. And you'll see that that's quite different from the other houses in the neighborhood. And that's an important point. Next slide, please, Mr. Heaton. Well, this slide doesn't show what I.
Mr. Park, excuse me. Could you explain your last comment again regarding pulled back from the beach?
Yes. This house, in comparison with the other houses on, you know, we used to call that Shark's Cove when I was a teenager. I don't know what it's called anymore, but back when it was a nudie beach and everybody went there, it was Shark's Cove. But, okay, Shark's Cove. These houses along Shark's Cove, by and large, are monolithic and they're right on the beach. And we're going to see that because I'm going to take you a walk on the beach pictorially. This house is set far back from the beach. It's different. That's the one way it's incompatible with the neighborhood in that it's set further back. I don't think that's a negative thing, but it's different. And we'll see that in the photos, Chairman Beard. What I'd hope to show here is the story poles and they're there. You can't quite see them. The point of this, there you go. The point of this slide is to show that any view out the windows that would be from the east over to the Clinks would be blocked by and large by the roof line and chimney of the existing portion, eastern portion of the Grissini residence. They don't literally look right out the window down into somebody's patio. It's blocked. And now it's especially blocked because you'd have to be seven feet high to look out that window. Let's, let's address what the real issue is, though, and that is the FAR guidelines. Can we go on to the next slide? That's an aerial view of Fernal Point Lane. This basically shows the houses on Shark's Cove. And this is what we think is a neighborhood that we should, we should address and try to address how compatible this property is with it. You know, this determination of size, bulk, and scale is a really important thing that this commission does. And I suppose some of you remember when you didn't use to do it. I do. I remember when I was growing up, going to Cold Spring School, there'd be a mixture of small houses and big houses. I went off to law school at UCLA and saw that all the houses were enormous right next to the campus on small lots. And I was so proud that Montecito and Santa Barbara didn't look that way. And I come back to Montecito and I find that people are knocking down the little houses and putting up these big mansions. And they look kind of like architecture from the grave. and putting up these big mansions, and they look kind of like architecture from the graveyard, you know, big, big pillars and entries. So it was important, when people finally got it, we needed to address size, bulk, and scale. That's a really good thing. The intent then was to not have McMansions on every single lot. There was a chart, you've all seen the chart, you've seen it hundreds of times, that's Table One. And Table One supports the, the architectural landscape design guidelines, and that chief guideline with respect to size, bulk, and scale is, "The floor area of a proposed house should be in scale with development on similar-sized parcels in the immediate area." I stress that. Table One is helpful because it, it gives maximum square footages. But the footnote to Table One is very important, it says, "In certain neighborhoods, the recommended maximum size in Table One may not reflect the appropriate level of development. In those cases, neighborhood compatibility shall be the determining factor." That's what I'd like to address here. Could you go on to the next slide, Mr. Heaton? This is the houses right in the surrounding area. The, the Grissini house is the least visible of all those houses because it's covered by trees and it's set back from the beach. You can see the gardener's cottage way to the back, this is kind of the right center. Go to the next slide.
Could you use your pointer and point out which is the Grissini--
You know, I forgot to bring my pointer.
No, I think they should, it's right there on your podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Somebody tell me how to use this. There we go, thank you. This is the Grissini residence. This Grissini lot, it's long and narrow, and that's that gardener's cottage that we talked about, okay? And we're going to look, and this is the Clink's residence. The Grissini addition would be here, it would look over the Clink's front yard. They were concerned about the area here that might overlook their house and their backyard. Let's go on to the next slide. This is the chart that you've looked at before, the study. This is the study of what's on the cove inside the gate. Here you have the square footages of those houses, lot size, the FAR guideline. You can see all of them exceed the FAR guideline except for this one, this house has never been built. This is on that little sliver lot that was recognized with a certificate of compliance for the, for the Clink's. They've got approval for a new house, and that's the only one that wouldn't exceed the FAR guidelines. This is the percentage by which the square footage exceeds the FAR guideline. This one, for example, is 144%, 106%. Most of them are over 50%, a few are only 25% or so. The new house for, with addition for the Grissinis would only be 46% over this, well, over the FAR guidelines. Also significant, maybe more significant, is how much of the lots are actually covered. And that's, that's something that affects neighbors and affects the public. Grissinis only 12% of the lot would be covered. On these others, as much as a third of the lot's covered, 38%, even higher than a third. But let's take a walk down the beach so you can see these houses, that's what really matters. You want to look at, is this house compatible with the neighbors? Let's look at what the neighbors look like, so let's go down here. This house is not on our chart, it's been there a long time, I remember this thing, it's, it's got, it's not just this, it's over here. This also, from the information we have, exceeds the FAR guidelines. That's the first house you see there. Now we're going to go walking up the beach. These are all nice houses, I don't mean to disparage them, but they all have a certain character. They're pretty close to the water, they're all completely visible to the public, they're all two-story, that one's three-story, and they're, they're monolithic in nature. They're large houses on small lots, and it's been that way on Fernal Point for a long time, and that's what the neighborhood looks like. Another one, three stories, right on the water, visible to the public, it's right there. Let's go on to the next one. Three stories, right on the water, fills the lot. Three stories, right on the water, fills the lot, I sound like a broken record. Also three stories, and also fills the lot and right on the water. I can't tell whether this is two stories or three stories, but it's, it's several stories and it's also monolithic, it's, at least it's hidden a little bit by the, by the vegetation. And I, again, I don't know how tall this is, I think it's two stories. A little bit further back, but pretty close to the water. Right on the water, is that two stories or three stories? I, I can't tell. Fills the lot. This is the Clink's residence, it's set further back. What this doesn't show is the, is the Clink's cabana that's right on the beach, but this is their, their main house, it's, it's two stories. Here's the Grissini residence. You know, I facetiously said, well, maybe it's not compatible with the neighborhood because it's got so much setback compared to the others. That's what I was talking about, Commissioner Beirig, is this is, this is set back much further from the beach than the other properties. It's got extensive vegetation there, that will screen the addition of just a second story, not a third story, just a second story. And that second story doesn't even cover all of the house. The, this part is, is not covered, so there's a setback from the east. It's, it's going to be much less obtrusive, less visible than any house in that neighborhood. It, it already is, the addition isn't going to really change it. Let's go on to the next slide. This is going to the, to the left, going up the beach. Again, it's a relatively large house that's multiple stories. The second story covers the whole beach facade, just like those others, like all of them do, except for the Grissinis. Let's go on one more. And this is, I've just stopped going up the beach here, this is two, two doors up, so to speak, and this is a, a very large house. This is right on the beach area, I think this is a 10,000 square foot house, and it's, it's 53% over the FAR guidelines. So this neighborhood is houses that are big, they're on the water, and they all vastly exceed the FAR guidelines, and they tend to be large houses on small lots. The Grissinis' house is going to be proportionally the smallest house on those lots. We go on, please. You've already seen this slide, Mr. Heaton put it up, these were the MBAR comments, I think those, it is a nice project, and it is a good example of how a design team and the MBAR worked together. They did make a suggestion that window placement be addressed. Window placement was an issue that was brought up at the last hearing by Mr. Clink's architect, Vadim Su, who said that the relocation of the window would be paramount, and that's, that's been done. Let's go on to the next one. These are the findings, this was the original findings from the original staff report, and it made the point that the residential structures on this area are between five and 10,000 feet, most are two stories, we've seen that in that neighborhood, actually most are three stories, that MBAR originally approved it, that it would be of a scale and character that's consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, this finding can be made. Now, what's happened to the project in the meantime? It shrunk, okay, it shrunk considerably, it's now down to 7,000 some square feet. The privacy concerns have been addressed with the window placement, things like that, it's, it's all been beneficial. The neighborhood hasn't changed, but let's look at the next finding. The current proposed finding is, and by the way, that recognizes that it's, that we're about a 7,000 square foot project. This finding says that it's not compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding community. That's what you've got to decide, is, is this particular project, is it in scale with that immediate neighborhood? And I, I think if you have an open mind and, and look at the facts, think about it, you would conclude that it is, and we, we suggest you do that. Final point I'd like to make is, you know, in 30 years of practicing law, I've, I've watched applicants' attorneys come up and, and beat up on staff, it's almost like an obligatory thing to do. It's always offended me as a Santa Barbara native to see people do that. We've worked Mr. Heaton extensively on this project and others, he's always been courteous and helpful, and I think we're going to miss him, and I congratulate you on your service and wish you luck on your next job. Thank you.
Mr. Park, I have a couple of questions for you.
Certainly, thank you.
What has been your discussions, the owner's discussions with the neighbor at 1767, the other, other side of the property from the Clink's? That would be the, the property on the, would be the west side, the west boundary of, of the applicant's project.
Okay, and we showed the slide of that.
You did, you, you addressed all of them, I just wondered, I'm, I'm just asking about the immediately adjacent neighbor, obviously there's a, some conflicts with the Clink's on the east side, I was wondering what the--
Do you mind if I ask Mr. Grissini--
No, please do.
Because I'm actually not familiar with any negotiations or discussions on that point.
And, and then I would like to address another question to you.
Okay, I'll be right.
Perhaps I could address that question. We've had discussions with most of the neighbors, both past the Clink's and to the east, and they've, they have no objection. Matter of fact, the neighbor to the east is a, is a fellow who said to me that it looked like--
You mean, you mean to the west?
To the other side of the Clink's, yes.
The other side of the Clink's.
The other, the other side of us.
Right.
And, and he thought the project was a nice project, he had no problems with it.
And what, what is that neighbor, do you remember his name?
Keston, yes, yes.
We are talking about the, the same one, it's--
Yes.
It's the one that's just on the other side of the gate, correct?
Yes, Mr. Keston's to the, the immediate to the, to next to us on the gate.
Just outside the gate.
And then next to him is Mr. Schwartz, who came before this commission recently and, and had a large addition.
The one that we saw under construction in the photo.
No, that's Mr. Spurling--
That's Spurling.
Who was accepted, that, that was four, five years ago. But that lot has remained like that since the construction was started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And do you have any other questions?
Mr. Park, would you mind addressing the, you know, we, we had, I believe, two different, you know, after we conceptually asked staff to go back and draft conditions for denial of this project, we received a couple requests for continuance with indicating that you were in discussions with your, your neighbor, with the neighbor, Mr. Clink, and I wondered if you could address the, the nature of those discussions--
I, I will.
And what prevented you from reaching some accommodation with the Clink's?
I'll do that. And I want to do this diplomatically, as--
Please, I mean, you can say it nicely.
Yeah, I know, well. We wanted to address a number of things there. One, this gardener's cottage encroaches on the Clink's property. And there's an easement for that, but it's still, it's, it's an encroachment. Another issue is that the Clink's have a garage and some other structures that encroach slightly on the Grissini property, okay? The gardener's cottage, as you know, is, is on the other side of the creek. And that creek is not just a little creek you kind of skip over the rocks, it's, it's a flood control channel there, it's a very deep one. You can't cross it except by the footbridge that the Grissinis have, unless you went up on the railroad track and came back around. It's, 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 it's one that the Clink's can't get to, it's one where trash has built up over the years, and the thought was, you know, it's going to make sense to just transfer this to, to Grissinis with, with a lot line adjustment, wouldn't be a separate parcel, with a lot line adjustment. Let them take care of it, let them maintain the wall and then clean up the vegetation, there are several utility easements and so forth there anyway. Then they won't have an encroachment for their gardener's cottage, and that's a good thing. And we thought, and let's, let's do something for the, for the Clink's, some kind of document that can be recorded that recognizes that whatever encroachment they have onto the Grissini property is okay. And we thought, well, let's clear up everything, and let's deal with whatever the Clink's concerns are about this particular project and address those, and, and we thought that would think, mean that the Clink's would no longer oppose the project and, you know, wrap it all up in one package. But whenever you transfer land, you have to pay a price for it, okay? And we have not yet agreed on what's an appropriate dollar amount for that transfer of property that would be accomplished with the lot line adjustment in the back. So we thought, we needed to divorce that from this proceeding. One, you couldn't wait forever for us to, to work this out, I understood that. And as I said, we did not want to hold the Clink's privacy concerns hostage to this issue about dollars, without, well, let's just deal with that anyway, let's give them what they want. It's a good thing to do for them. And someday we may agree on what happens with that lot line adjustment, I personally think it would be a good idea for that land to be transferred so that Mr. Grissini deals with it instead of the Clink's, but that hasn't happened. I hope that was as diplomatic as could be.
Could you address the nature of the discussions with the Clink's related to the issue of privacy on the two-story section?
Yes, I haven't, I haven't--
Is that an ongoing discussion?
No, we--
Or, or has the discussion been, at this point, pretty much exclusively related to this transfer of property?
The, the recent discussion has been related to that. I mean, we, we made the changes that were suggested by the Clink's architect and sent them to the Clink's, and, and I, and I, you know, we have had no discussions other than that.
This is after our, our action previously?
Yes.
Correct?
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Park, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Burrows, did you have a question?
Thank you, I do, I do.
Yes.
When this project was initially before us, it seems to me that I remember there was an issue about a tree, removal of a tree, our vegetation in regard to the privacy. How has that been resolved, or am I thinking about another project?
I think you're thinking about this project.
Okay, what was the deal on the trees?
And, and, but that doesn't mean I can answer your question. I know, I know that there was a statement from the MBAR, "Please address privacy with either window placement--
Yes.
--or vegetation. There's already a lot of vegetation there, I think the thought was, there doesn't need to be more vegetation. If somebody wanted it, I'm sure that Grissinis would, would add it, but I think that what they tried to do was address that view out the window. It may be that somebody else here knows more about this than I do, I, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Park. Does that conclude your, your presentation and your--
Oh, just briefly, I, I, I hope you're fair about this, I know that the, the Clink's came before you for a, an application, and that was granted, that would cause, they're already 72% over FAR with their increase that they have permitted but haven't done yet on the lot that their main house is, they'll be even higher than that. So, there you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Ken Minow with Appleton and Associates, just a minor point on the vegetation, just to answer that. There is an existing avocado tree that's on the Clink property, that's right in that area where the windows are. It seems to be in a state of declining health, and one of the conditions was by the MBAR that if or when it goes back for their final review to address the vegetation, and we agreed to do that, and if that tree looks like it's going to be gone, we would, had agreed to actually add trees in that location.
On your side?
On our side, correct.
Thank you very much. And that, excuse me, just, that was, that is a condition, I, I can get this from staff, that was a condition of the original, Mr. Mr. Heaton, that was a condition of the, the original staff recommendation for approval?
I, I do not believe that specifically was an original condition, that the condition that they go back to MBAR is a standard condition and was included in the memo that staff presented in the original hearing, I believe a suggestion was a condition could be added that was specific to screening.
To that, that item.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Heaton. Now would be the time for public testimony on this item, and I'm going to open it up for, for that. I have one speaker slip here, which is from Derek Weston, and if there's anyone else who wishes to address us on this item, now would be the time to submit a speaker slip. You've been listening to me up here clearing my throat too many times, huh? It's, it's that season, isn't it? I'm using coffee.
Good morning, Chairman Beirig, members of the commission. I want to start by joining the other commissioners, joining staff, and joining the community, and thanking you, Commissioner Beirig, for your service over the last six years. It really has been an extraordinary contribution to our community, and we all appreciate-- extraordinary contribution to our community, and we all appreciate it deeply.
Thank you.
I'm here today on behalf of John and Pat Clink. My name is Derek Weston. As always, when there is a conflict of any kind, I work very hard to achieve a resolution, and we did that along with Rob Eganoff, who's also representing the Clink's, but were unsuccessful. I want to start, as you, as Mr. Park ended, by talking about the settlement, because, to be honest, I really was offended by that entire line of discussion. We had discussions that were confidential. In a court of law, private settlement discussions are not even admissible, so it's inappropriate. And the reason that those discussions are inadmissible is so that the parties will feel fully free to say or take any position that they think is appropriate without the fear that those issues will be discussed in public. So, those are always kept confidential to avoid a chilling effect and to really make settlement possible. I disagree with some of Mr. Park's characterizations of the discussion, but I ultimately think that they're completely irrelevant in any event, and this is why. We always assumed, we always assumed that if there were a settlement, the application would be withdrawn and a different application was filed. And the reason for that is this. There were a number of issues that were raised when this came before you on June 19th, was it, earlier in this year? At that time, there was a very thorough, very full appeal. All of the issues were carefully presented. All five of the planning commissioners were present. It was a long, careful, and thorough hearing. And at the end of it, unanimously determined, it was not a close vote, three to two, unanimously determined that the project was inappropriate and incompatible with the neighborhood. You discussed it thoroughly. It wasn't a casual decision. You always are careful. You were careful in this case. Some of you had very strong views on this and were concerned about canyonization and protection of the entire neighborhood and the precedent that this project would set. The issue before you today is whether the findings that staff has prepared are consistent with your ruling. And they are. It never occurred to me, frankly, that this entire project would be reheard de novo because you've already heard it and decided it. And the only question now is, are the findings that staff has drafted compatible with what you unanimously said? And of course, they are, because that's exactly what you said. John and Pat Clink are not even in the country at this time. Their advisors and architects aren't here. The other attorneys are not here. But I've just never seen a case where it was fully and fairly decided, and then the applicant come back and attempts to completely reargue the case on something that was originally set for administrative consent agenda only. And the only reason that it's not on the consent agenda is because we were, in my judgment, gracious enough to offer them additional time in order to facilitate a full discussion to see if there was any agreement between the neighbors that, in our view, would have led to the applicant withdrawing and starting over. And the reason, the reason the settlement is irrelevant is that you, your findings were not based primarily upon the complaints of the Clink's, but your judgment as to compatibility of this project with the entire neighborhood, not the neighborhood that Mr. Park is now redefining as everything beyond a certain point that mathematically works out well for him, I guess. He hasn't shared those figures with us before. As a matter of fact, we haven't had any of these discussions before. I don't think we were even aware that he'd reduced it 100 feet, which is trivial. So he's attempting to redefine how neighborhood is defined and reargue a case that was fully resolved and that would have been settled way back in August, I believe, on the consent agenda, but for our cooperation in trying to give him ample time to see the problem that he faced, which is that you determined that the project was incompatible with the neighborhood. The Clink's do retain concerns about privacy. We had hoped, in the context of a global resolution, that they would also withdraw the application and come up with an appropriate design. But that hasn't happened. So we're back to where we were on June 16th, when you unanimously determined that this was inappropriate. We do think that this is an inappropriate precedent. It will lead, as I think one of you said, to canyonization in this area and a miramar effect that was very concerning to you at the time. The, it is true, the two small windows have been moved, and one large picture window has been placed in the corner. That raises different and significant privacy concerns. But those weren't the reasons that you made the finding. You made the finding because you thought the size, bulk, and scale was an inappropriate precedent for the entire neighborhood. And the only other thing I will add is that this is a, this is a house, I'm sorry, a lot, that already has two principal residences on it, plus a guest house, this gardener's cottage. It has a development that very, very few properties in Montecito already have. We think that your findings were correct on June 16th. Nothing has changed, except 100 square foot, square feet, and a small change to these windows. Nothing has changed to the findings, I'm sorry, nothing has changed to the facts that led you to make the findings, that this was incompatible with the community. So, the only question before you, in my judgment, is, are the findings presented to you by staff consistent with your determination on June 16th? And they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Is there anyone else who wishes to address us on this item? Not seeing anyone else. Close the time for public comment. Does the applicant wish to make any additional presentation? Do you have an opportunity to rebut or fill in?
I'll be very brief. You know, I join with Mr. Weston in feeling sensitive about settlement negotiations. That's why I was reluctant to launch into a full-scale description of what occurred in response to your question, Chairman Birig. Be that as it may, it was never, ever part of any negotiation that I was party to, to withdraw this application. We never negotiated with Mr. Weston, negotiated with Mr. Eganoff. It was, this project was going to go forward. And of course, this project would have to be approved by this commission regardless of what those negotiations accomplished. So we always knew that. And that's why it's appropriate for you to have been informed that we were having negotiations as we came to these various hearings to request continuances. So, no, it's just simply not true that there was some kind of deal made to withdraw this. We've done everything we can to meet the specific objections that were made by the Clink's. And we produced those plans and gave them to Mr. Weston, the Clink's, months ago, and received no objections to those plans or any comments on them. So I'm sort of surprised today to hear that he's hearing of things for the first time. But perhaps he's right. It really is irrelevant. What matters is, is this project compatible with the neighborhood, and we think we've shown that it is. And we hope you look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Can I just comment?
Of course.
When the matter was taken up at the June 18th hearing, I wasn't present. And we provided no information regarding compatibility with the neighborhood because the findings of your staff had been that it was compatible. So when that issue was brought up at the last time, I don't know how you can say there was a complete determination made because we hadn't even submitted any material on it. Since that time, we've looked at what's occurred in the neighborhood, approvals by this commission relative to additions to homes. Two years ago, there was an approval by this commission to add a second-story addition to Mr. Clink's home, which would have put it over the FAR standards far greater than ours. The Schwartz home on the other side, down in the, further down past the cove, was approved and went way over the standards. The Azizas put a second-story addition on their house two years ago, way over the standards. And I just, I just want to make it clear that when we came the last time, we didn't have an opportunity to present to the commission the findings that we've presented today.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Burrows, did you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to please ask staff if you could comment...
If you could hold on for just...
Yes.
So, yeah, I guess I don't need, we'll end the time for public comment, and so, no, that's, I guess I had done that. So, yes, we are at the point of questions of staff. So please proceed.
If I could please ask of counsel. Could you please address the comments that Mr. Weston brought before us in regard to whether or not this commission is bound by our direction to staff to come back with findings for denial on this project? And whether or not the new information that we have received in regard to the new design and the lowered square footage, whether that is sufficient to have us reconsider our original direction to staff?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, my understanding is that the commission took a conceptual vote at the last meeting, and that is not binding on your commission. You have the discretion today to approve or deny the project. And as far as the new information, the item was adequately noticed today. It's on the standard agenda. So, and public comment was taken. So it was a full hearing, and you can consider the new information. Does that address your questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If we're at the point of deliberation, I can go ahead and close the public hearing, unless you have questions of staff.
I have a question of staff.
Okay.
Mr. Heath, is it? Heaton, do you, are you aware of what criteria MBAR used to determine their view that this was compliant with the neighborhood or consistent with, compatible with the neighborhood? Do you know what territory they defined, used, they identify that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I was not at that hearing, but my understanding is that the Clink's or the representative did show up and discuss the fact that a neighborhood study had been prepared for their neighboring project. The MBAR requested that study and reviewed that study with relation to this project and determining the extent of the neighborhood.
Was it an inside-the-gate, outside-the-gate differential study, or was it an all-of-frenal point?
That study included all-of-frenal point.
All-of-frenal.
And has been presented to your commission as well.
And in spite of the 46% number or 67% number, MBAR found that the project compatible?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, that study did not have a summary percentage, if I recall right. But they, it had an itemized by lot percentage. So that 67%, it's not something I saw on that original study supplemental.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gottsinger.
Yeah, Mr. Heaton, when this went to MBAR, was it for conceptual review or had it proceeded into the preliminary review stage? I mean, from the comments that I see on the board that have been presented today, which I can't seem to find in here, you showed a slide and it went up twice, and those were the comments, those were the, could you put that slide up again, just?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, the project's only been for conceptual review and directed to return for preliminary final.
Oh, okay, okay. That was, that was from the comments. That was, that was what I would assume from the kind of comments that were made, that it was a conceptual, okay, a nice project, good example, you know, improvement in south-west screening. So, I mean, I, from what I see there, from the comments that were made at conceptual review, I can't determine that they really even made findings, the MBAR made findings for neighborhood compatibility. In my understanding of how MBAR works, that would be something that would be made at preliminary review. So for me, I can't assume that those comments indicate that they made a finding for neighborhood compatibility based on the FARs. That's just the way I interpret it.
Yeah, I understand your point. Commissioner Burrows?
One of my concerns when this came before us for the first time was the privacy issue for the Clink's. So I was wondering if Mr. Weston could address that. You did say a couple of things, but could you please address the privacy issue?
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner Burrows. I don't know if you could put up a slide that would show this, but there were two windows that looked into the middle part of what technically is the backyard, but in reality is the front yard, the outdoor living space that's used by the Clink's. All right, let me see if I can get oriented here. So, right in this area, there were some windows that looked into this area to the east, which is the outdoor front living area towards the ocean that's enjoyed by the Clink's. And what the new design has done is, it has removed, I think, two of those windows. And then, I think it is right here put, although it may also be here. A picture, is it here, Jim? Okay, is, there's, they've added a large picture window from this front living area that looks into this entire area that is enjoyed by the Clink's. So it essentially looks down on them. Now, there was a window on the corner before, and it is true that someone sitting right in the corner of this addition could look back onto the Clink's outdoor living area. But the more natural thing was to look down the coast. And now there is a second window, quite a large window, so that they will be looking more directly into this outdoor living area and on a spa, outdoor spa area that the Clink's have. So I know the Clink's feel that some of the privacy concerns have changed, but in some respects, they may even be more serious. Their fundamental, so have I answered your question? There is, if you look at the elevation on that side, you'll see there's a second large window that, there we go. I believe this window is new. Is that right? It's not down here. So before, if you moved all the way to the corner of this room, you could look down the coast, down this way. Now they have this large picture window, which I'm not sure isn't even worse than the two small windows that were there. We have not reargued today all of the size, bulk, and scale issues that were addressed. But of course, that first hearing was fully noticed, and the applicant had every opportunity to present any information they thought was relevant. And at the end of it, you made your determination. Staff is quite correct. I did not mean to say that you don't have the power to reconsider your decision, only that we think there are no facts that have changed. You had a full and fair hearing before, and we don't think that there is any meaningful change to any of the factors that led you to make your findings, which we're really almost exclusively dealing with neighborhood compatibility and the size, bulk, and scale of the project. Have I answered your question, Commissioner Burrows? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Could I respond to that?
I don't think, I think we've, unless you have some new information...
Well, only on the issue of the privacy, because if you'll recall, at the last hearing, there were photographs taken of where that window that has been moved would have been had it not been moved. And that, those windows are 15 or 16 feet off the property line, and there's a roof there. There is literally no way that you could see into the Clink's property from the window as it's now placed or the window in front. We have absolutely... We have absolutely taken care of any of the concerns that the Clink's, to my knowledge, had about the window in the bedroom looking over the roof into their backyard. And as far as being able to present everything that we needed to present at the last hearing, at the last hearing, we had the letter from the Clink's in which they indicated that they had no objection to the scale, size, or scope of the project. The only objection they had was to the, was to the privacy issue. And it's, it's now morphed into this, but we didn't have that issue before. At least, we didn't know that was going to be an issue when we came the last time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about due process issues at this point. Did we, staff says that we closed the hearing.
We continued.
Well, that has to be changed. Close the public hearing on this item, that we took conceptual action.
Just for the day, but we reopened it today. But I don't, there's no-
We closed it for the day?
Why don't we?
We actually, we actually, it says on the front page.
If I, hold on for a second, Commissioner Gottsinger.
I mean, we did continue it, it says it right here.
At this point, I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing unless there's other questions on the project itself, because I think we're at the point of deliberation on this item. Am I incorrect, Commissioner Phillips?
I, I hope that-
Excuse me, I hope that the public has an opportunity to, to comment on the, what seems to be an attempt at a new definition of neighborhood. I hope that the public has had that opportunity at this point, before we close.
I see. Okay, understood.
I would, I don't know how you're going to handle that, since I'm not sitting there. I don't have to.
Well, I'm not, I don't find, you know, we have, we have findings for, at our last hearing, we had findings for approval. For various reasons, we didn't feel we could approve it, and continue this item to today. We have a fully notice. We can, we can approve, we can deny, we can do, we can continue again.
So our conceptional, our conceptual direction is-
That motion was only for the purpose of, was it worthwhile to send it, to have staff create findings for denial, should we determine that-
Should we? Okay.
-was the direction. That's how I see all of our conceptual motions. They are, they are not motions, because we didn't have adequate findings to make a motion for denial, so we simply said to staff, can you prepare findings? Is there enough controversy and enough issue here to create, to prepare findings for denial? They could have well come back and said, as they have on some projects, and said, we can't do that.
Well, I do believe that at that hearing, we did take a vote, though, to conceptually deny the project.
We did.
And directed staff to come back with findings so that that could be made legal.
Absolutely.
That vote could then be taken.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think-
But we did not bind ourselves to then make a determination of, to deny today. And that's, I think Commissioner Phillips is concerned that we, we can't take any other course of action, and I'm only pointing out, that's not, not true.
Oh, oh, got it. Yeah, no, it's-
Yeah, right.
I think counsel has-
Yeah, I am correct in that, is, am I not?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's correct. When you take a conceptual vote, you are directing staff to return with findings to support your decision, but you do have the discretion. It's on for a full hearing today, and you do have discretion to, to make the determination whether to approve or deny the project.
No, actually, what I'd like to do is take a five-minute break and use the restroom. So, so how about if we take a five-minute break and we'll come back-
On your last day here, we'll grant you that.
And I'm going to, and close the public hearing and take it to deliberation will be our next step. I think we're finished with the testimony. Thank you.